Hold this meeting for order. Uh, motion to adopt the agenda?
So, I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing done. Motion carries. Provo minutes.
Oh, for approval? Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing done. Motion carries. Okay, tonight we have a public hearing. We'll call it public hearing at six thirty-one. It's a consolidated preliminary and final plat application of a two lot residential subdivision known as Karnowski's first edition. Supposed lots to be twenty-two thousand nine hundred thirty-nine and twenty thousand four hundred sixty square feet. The applicant is Mary Ann Karnowski and the rest of it I'll turn over to Ben.
Okay. Uh, so this, yes, this is an application for a two lot subdivision. We've got actually three parcel numbers out there right now as you can see on the map here. This parcel is not highlighted. A large parcel here and a little sliver of that is the third parcel. And they want to turn that into two lots that are still under active there. One which would contain the existing house, two garage and buildings, and one would be vacant. I've got this that most of them as well. So that's the proposal. This is right on Ninth and Seventh, South Devon Northeast and Ninth Street Northeast, just to the northwest of the U. Oleville. And uh, it is a consolidated plat, so if we're dealing with a full of preliminary plat and final plat. Usually if you're gonna have a gap between the two, it's because you got to construct roads or do some kind of improvements. In this case, all the improvements are in place, all the utilities are in place, and so there's no need for any of that. So they are asking for both approvals, recommendations for approvals tonight.
Okay, uh, suppose at this time, uh, I hear from the general public.
Yeah, okay, I wanna...
Already applied that, yeah. Ben, you wanna speak about this?
Um, not really. I just wanna get the, the, it, okay, I mean, approved to make the two lots, so that I can look at personally possibly selling one of the lots, and then fixing up the house and stuff, and eventually selling that too.
Just give us your address and stuff.
My address?
Yeah.
My home address?
Yeah, this is a, just something we have to do.
Oh, my address is nine sixteen Sixth Street Northeast, Little Falls, Minnesota.
Okay.
This was a family property, yes?
My house.
Back to the public, right?
Yeah, back to the public. Anyone else there have anything to speak for or against this? Nothing? Okay. Uh, did you hear anything from the neighbors right in?
Uh, just had one verbal or phone call that I, I did them just in the comments, written comments, and they, I haven't seen anything. But they were just wondering about the zoning of the property. I suppose it was zone R three, and that's not proposed to change, it's still Zoned R three. So they, I think they were just basically wondering if it was gonna be a large, like, family, uh, if it was gonna be affordable housing or something like that.
So they were thinking they were gonna take both lots and do something else with them?
Uh, yeah, I don't know, about taking both lots to do one thing or whatever. They were just wondering what kind of housing was gonna be there. And they said it's whatever the zoning district allows, which in R three is more than family housing. It doesn't have to be that, and I think that's the intention, I'm not sure so far, but.
Okay.
Can I inform them that you know it's not affordable housing, let the cities know.
Okay, at this time, uh, close the public hearing. Six thirty-five. We'll have a discussion amongst the committee up here. Anyone wishing to speak about this?
I saw a question from Marianna. I see, um, on our beacon map, we got the yellow line with the two houses. So basically, we're just moving that property line to the north to get all the building structures on one lot, and then the other lot's gonna be completely vacant.
Just like it is now.
So that's basically moving that one lot line and getting rid of the sliver on the other one, just basically cleaning the property up. Is kinda what I viewed it as, so you have a vacant lot and you have a lot without, with a primary structure on it versus splitting it the other way with it all being one and have one side. That's just what I kinda grabbed from, I just wanted to make clear that that's what, uh, what the intentions are here to get it cleaned up, make one sellable as a vacant and one as a structure.
Uh, utilities aren't affected by anything, uh, so this is right.
President, no further questions. I make a motion to approve.
I'll second the motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? We have that. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing done. Motion carries. That public hearing is over.
And this takes care of both, both piles?
Yep. If both of those recommendations will go to the council and make approval. So, can I have a council and then, uh, is that, is that, do you think?
Good request. I think that'll work out well.
Yeah, there's plenty of spur footage, make each lot, and so...
Tell me more, I'm just cutting that.
Hopefully not pushmore.
Yeah, really. What is pushmore?
The old real, the old real style?
Uh, the old real style, yeah. It's like I told Greg that one day, I said, "I've been cutting that property that didn't even belong to us." All these years.
Hey, I'll keep you in shape.
Yeah, look at my shape. You know, that'd be good shape, right? Thanks, guys. Thank everybody. Appreciate it. Hi.
Okay, no other public hearings. We have some old business. It's a discussion on storage BOD regulations. Ben, that's you again.
This is the same staff report that was last month, and we didn't have time to get to it, tabled it. So, um, I hope you recall, a couple months ago, we started talking about these storage units. We started to see more interest in public having for moving or whatever it may be, construction activities. The city's code right now is not clear as, clear or specific on how to handle those, how to make those at all. So we intend here to clarify that. I don't have proposed language in this staff report, but I have basically a long list of possible regulations from some other cities, and they have them. And I guess the intent is to just kind of go through it, see which ones, if something makes sense or doesn't make sense. And then we can go out to work and draft an ordinance that we can write to you next, next month if you're ready for it, or whatever, and have, whether or not, about the changing ordinance.
Sounds good.
Mr. Chairman, might as well just, why don't we just take this bullet point by bullet point and see if there's consensus among the members?
I think that's a good idea.
Plow through it.
What do you think, I mean?
I think, I don't think I can say them, say more, because some of them seem way off the wall and some of them...
Yeah, make a lot of sense.
Make sense, so.
Yeah.
President, if we, I'll just start out with number one. It says a primary use on a property. I'm not quite sure what that means, how a temporary storage unit, I'm guessing we're talking, and I think we would wind up with these being temporary. What is there?
That makes sense.
What, what is a primary use on the property? Primary use would be storage, is that what's meant?
Well, but that, to me, what that means is that if a lot is zoned residentially, then in order to be able to house it, it's a property. So it's not, it's not intended to be, if you have that kind of regulation, what you're saying is you don't want these to be the only thing on the lot essentially.
Okay.
So that could, Mary Ann, there on that one lot, that she just popped a container on there just for storage? Does somebody come by and put that on there for storage or lawnmower, or a lawnmower?
So it's not the primary use of the container?
No, that, the primary use of a lot would be defined typically as, you know, if, if it's residential zoned, it would be residential use of some type. Which is the house or the apartment, or whatever it might be. Is it commercial properties?
Yeah, there's kinda worded that the container itself must have a primary use on the property. But, uh, this is just meaning that property has to have primary use in place, or is one of these even be considered to be put there. Sort of a way of... Worded a little different, so it's, the property must be in primary use.
Yeah.
Or something.
I think the intent is to make sure that there's somebody that's actively using that property for some other purpose, and this is sort of like an accessory to that. It's a side thing, not main thing on property.
That's a little clear.
So you generally like that concept of wanting to be...
Just worded it better so it doesn't look like the container itself must have a primary use.
Number two doesn't apply.
No, we'd almost have to allow them on residential property if we're going to...
Use it for transporting or moving.
It's gonna be temporary, yes.
Right. Kind of, unless you're not allowing the residential area at all, just industrial, it's kind of the whole idea, people moving in and out of homes and... And, you know, I think we're on a church or whatever.
We'd take care of some of those issues with setbacks and time allowed and...
Yeah.
Where there's, how long and on what type of surface they can touch.
I think there, I mean, there were some communities that just, I don't know, right down.
We discussed last time maybe a maximum of sixty days.
Yeah, that comes up, is that, that's addressed or?
Yeah, later on we got to...
I think that's too restrictive that you would allow them.
I think we should allow, yeah, under stipulation, we should be allowed in.
What do you mean by number three, allow or open storage is allowed? Is that, is it supposed to be possible?
Yeah, they'll have restrictions on open storage, so you, you know, if you're gonna, if you anything from a woodpile for firewood or just storing wood, bode or building materials or whatever might be, that people store outside. Think about it like an industrial zoned property where you have to have a little pay fence, have anything outside. Rather than allowing demo debris or outside in the view, this would be allowed more of that type of open, uh, type of situation. So if they require that screening, these wouldn't necessarily be allowed in that location. He didn't like the last one, I think, but I think that would be, right?
Yeah, I don't like that.
There's screening in, how do you know that you can have?
Next one, one go? That one has go too, must not be visible.
Be hard to pre, kinda hard to screen a forty-foot thing.
But the next one, not allowed on the street or otherwise in the public right of way, I agree with that one.
Yep.
We discussed that, that they do cause harm to the street.
Right.
Yep.
And also block view.
It's only different rate between a semi trailer though and a container. A semi trailer's got tires and a dolly.
They, they tend to be there for what, twenty-four hours?
A semi trailer can, right.
Yeah.
I guess I would distinguish them because the semi trailer's got wheels on it, and it slices the road ready, yeah, so it's not, it's designed to be on the road whereas...
Right, but there it's only for twenty-four hours.
Yeah.
So would you allow it to be on the road for six months?
No.
Or six weeks, I mean, or?
If you would allow this on the street, it'd have to be on their property.
Suppose not to allow it on the street.
Right.
They'd have to be on their, in their driveway or in their yard or, okay?
As public works, who would recommend not on the street?
Correct.
The next one, I...
Pretty obvious.
Well, if it's not on the street, it can't block him, so.
Well...
A blocked view, that was a good one.
Even if you're on a corner, corner lot, if you put that thing like right in the corner, you could be...
Then you probably...
Yeah, it needs to be pushed back away so there is a sight of view, you know?
Right, right. You, we have a right of way to be able to pump it up, so we can get rid of this one. We don't allow them on the street, I mean, the right of way, we can take that one out because our right of way extends back farther in the street.
Okay.
That's fifteen feet, twenty feet, that's primary, that's about.
Because we talk, one of these others talked about setback, now, oh, there we go.
Must be placed a concrete or asphalt surface.
Uh...
I would see probably building out.
Yeah, because if they have a real small driveway and...
A lot of people won't have concrete, yeah.
If you ever grab the driveway.
Yeah, or up to the applicant into the hollow where they wanna deal with it, because they're gonna be moving it, um, so it's either gonna be disturbing their grass and such, it doesn't really show the difference to put it in.
You know, just discussing that, our utilities are usually deep enough that if they put a big truck over it, it's not gonna do any damage.
Let's get it back over the water.
Close to a water, yeah. Well, push the place down there, down low real quick if they do it.
Do we, do we have ag areas in the city limits?
We sit up by Walmart, there, there's that eggs, that's in there, they're in form of building, but I don't know.
Or like crumbles blending, but that would be more, that would be commercial, obviously, but.
Are we having a distribution between?
President?
Yeah, we'll share it with that.
I guess it's got the impression that in some communities, we're trying to allow for farmer to install it.
Okay.
For purchase, but if we, if we're not distinguishing or limiting them in residential or commercial, I don't see what we would want to have also. With the stipulations on the time travel.
But the language here says no restrictions.
Yeah, I don't think, uh...
Just take it out, give it all the same.
Probably leave it all the same and address conditional uses later.
The last one there is, I think, paragallific commercial areas where you have a required parking spaces, and watch put it, these parking spaces, take it in.
The landscaped areas, no.
I mean, get rid of that.
You can get rid of that part. I mean, if they wanna put something on top of their armpit IDs, I suppose, what's it gonna hurt, they lose their armpit ID?
Even voting area, they can tell if the store's sharing their voting dog.
Right.
It's up to them.
Yeah, I just, we require parking, we should keep parking over there.
Just for the parking spaces.
Yeah.
Unless you see something else necessary that we're not seeing.
No, I think it's just, you know, again, if you have a requirement for certain one of the voting area, you know, but if you put time restrictions on these, then it's probably not important. We can come back to these two after we have a time restriction. Yeah, the next section is about setbacks.
First one I'm okay with, um...
And that would take care of everything, wouldn't it?
So, I didn't like the zero foot setback to the rear side because you could stick one of these right on the property line and somebody could just plant some new grass or heads there. You're blocking the sun out, you're pretty much taking care of your plants. So someone has to, like, what if brings their head back far over the line?
Yeah.
And I just puffed it.
I would say, I would go with the first one, same as other.
Stay with the first one and...
It gets me a long ways, though, if you're building a house, if they, from the thirty feet back, you gotta keep it there and that's where your building can be.
Side yards, about five feet, ten feet?
Well, residential, it's mostly five feet, but there are some business distractions with this here, side by side, that's it. So that might be where you want to say at least five feet.
Five feet, probably.
You could say five feet or whatever applies to accessory structure, whatever's created.
Okay. Yeah, I like that idea.
Rest of it all falls into the first two.
Yeah, for two to cover.
Now, the last one on that first page, if you want a setback between two of them.
I think that would be a good feeling.
Well, it probably wouldn't be a bad idea though for fire issue if you had to get between them or, so you can put a foot apart, it could get, fall between them and get strapped in there, probably wouldn't be...
Yeah.
Bad idea, keep them separated five feet, ten feet apart.
At least five feet.
We change it to five feet, okay?
Yeah. Never thought about somebody, you know, somebody might crawl up there and fall and get wedged between the two. That would be a good thing.
Yeah, this way too, like you said, it wouldn't be up against the side of a garage or something.
We have, uh, well, aren't they all constructed the same? I mean, they have, these are the units that they use for, on the railcar carriers, transporting off of ships and...
Or some places, um, pods is a, is a commercial company that, like, for moving and stuff you can use.
Building and fire codes?
Is that gonna get real tricky?
Well, if they're under two hundred square feet, then they wouldn't apply as my understanding of the product.
Yeah.
If they're over that, which I think a number of them are...
Yeah.
But...
Then they would, you know, I guess whatever the codes has, then, or just sort of reiterate, then it applies.
Then we're messing with the whole having a boxton leaves and supposed to have, you know, because even if you put up a small storage unit or something, you have to have some form of leaves and boxton.
If these are temporary and they're going to be moved.
Yeah.
Or the ones where you demand leaves, a permanent structure.
That's why where it says must adhere to building and fire code, our building codes say boxton leaves, so we should maybe give...
Must adhere to fire codes?
Must adhere to the fire codes.
Yeah, we could clarify that.
I think you're really drawing straws there on that one, to be honest with you.
We could clarify that it's like the Minnesota State Building code line.
Yeah.
Okay.
Which, I mean, I actually don't consider that boxt even a building code, but I realize that confusing, we say, it's more of a zoning condition than it is state building code.
So if a semi trailer built a building code and fire code?
Can't stick them in your yard either.
Right, but they fall underneath this. So a semi trailer, you could, you could put in your yard along with the container, so if the semi trailer's gotta be fire code to put it there, it'd be temporary storage.
Are we defining these? I guess that's a question I don't know if I have here. Would we be defining these as something different than a semi trailer?
Well, we're talking pods here, not...
I, I'm thinking of those, not wheels, they're just...
Yeah, they're pods, right, we're not even bringing them up.
So you ain't concerned about your storage on wheels, like, you know, it's your semi trailer that people rent to move from house to house and...
Well, those have to be road, right, licensed.
Right, but you still park them in your yards, you can park a semi trailer in your yard for however long you want?
As long as it's licensed, yes.
Yes, same as a vehicle. You can put a vehicle in your yard as long as it's licensed.
Yep. And it's minimal.
Yeah.
And pop it over.
Yeah.
Like, we put forty cars on that lot, go for it. As long as they run and they're licensed, right, and insured, okay? I guess they'll just open up a public, charge people parking there.
I can double check if the building code issue with our building inspector, just make sure. You can maybe deal with that more specifically if you have time.
Maintain a good condition and add on free graffiti and that's, that's all good.
That's a good one. I don't think we wanna get into color, no.
Step, we shouldn't have, something painted like a select of mirrors, so when you try to pack it, it's a glare and... Good way to advertise.
You go get someone's attention.
What was, like, bottom of that first bullet point there?
I think they're all constructed the same. That's good, just leave it, because they're built on at least fourteen gauge.
How much does that mean?
They'll see them hanging and they're going down the road.
Yeah, floors are usually wooden.
Wooden, yeah.
Mr. President, may I ask you a question?
You may.
I, um, was just looking at the first one that you guys talked about. There's so many homes in this town that don't have adequate place on their property, even to park. And let's say somebody wants to move in or out of a location like that and they can't put it on the street. How can this be accommodated then?
Well, if we look for something else, some other way, if we can't put them on the street, it causes damage to the street, we've already, uh, we've seen it. You know, you even put these, uh...
Dumpsters.
Dumpsters out there and they're doing damage, and then it costs the community money to go fix that up.
Yeah, they roll off, they have a tendency to dig in.
Yeah, but doesn't the company that puts them on the ground, whether the ground is on private property or the street, aren't they liable? I would think they would be.
I'm sure they have a waiver sheet people sign.
They're, they're, I know, when you get a container, they're not liable for any damage to the duty area, territory.
Yeah, but on a public street, no matter how it's damaged, that person that's doing the damage would have to be liable for that, I would think. I just think it's, you know, there's...
Anytime you drop one of them, even after twenty-four hours, they're settling down already, especially during the summer when it's hot.
Just look at the blacktop off the front here. I mean, vehicles during the times that were damaging it, so you can imagine something like a dumpster or a car, um, sitting there at any level.
I think if they won't let a car sit on the street for more than twenty-four hours, we'll put a, still contain a hard time middle of the road for two months.
Right.
You know, it's, can't beat the purpose of our twenty-four hour parking lot, basically.
Okay, now we're moving down to maximum number, uh...
But there again, wouldn't a lot of it depend on the size of the lot?
Uh, how much stuff they have to move, that's what it really depends on.
You could, I mean, you could set it up like that, have them on per ten thousand square meter, like a block or something, or...
That makes sense.
Yeah, that does make sense, like that.
Maybe if you still wanted maximum, same, what you're asking.
That's gonna be different though for residential or for commercial.
Okay, this commercial, they're...
Somebody's building Walmart, they bring ten containers or fifteen containers.
They've got the right element, in fact.
They have, they have more there.
What's that?
They're in thirty.
Yeah, and there's a bunch of them on one side that you haven't counted.
Well, they even have a large number of Burger King.
Sure.
And that's a small construction.
Yeah, we have to be able to allow them, I think in commercial and building situations, because that's the way their materials are coming in.
Right.
Especially in larger construction.
And that's the only way they can secure their materials and keep them, keep them from weather damage.
Because a Lutheran home's got a bunch of containers there now too.
Maybe you wanna move down to the next timeline first and then come back.
Okay, seven days and six months. One year for Tom Holmes and Motte Family.
Yeah, so that first one, some people, some communities have seven days, six months, and some have seven days.
Okay.
It's like you have for a recon, every six months, they can have it there for a...
You know, after we're discussing this last time, I was almost thinking sixty days, and now I'm starting to think thirty days is plenty. You know, when you're moving out of, out of a house, it does not take two months, you know?
True.
You would have to be able to, well, then that's different, that's, or if they're building, you know, if you're building a home.
There is language further down in here, it says license and bonded contractor.
There is language further down in here. It says licensed and bonded contractors may have it the entire construction period. When accompanied with. Building permit. You know, so we could, you know, for those situations, I think that kind of language would cover that.
One thing I'd say about timelines too, especially for like multi-family, they have big apartment building. Probably wouldn't wanna limit it.
No.
Probably. You might have a unit there.
And you don't want in a situation like that, everybody has a right to have it there for sixty days. Because you can have many of them there all the time.
Right.
So, I don't know, I'm coming up with that three days. That might even be.
What about sixteen days?
Yeah.
I mean, you got.
That'd be better.
The one is sixteen day grace period, and I kinda like that.
Yeah.
Specifically from the, an administrative point of view. I don't know how, how many of these things you're gonna get applications.
Yeah.
But most of them are gonna be for relatively short period of time. Sixteen days, two weeks. Moving in and out, if you're moving in and out of a typical house, you're in and out of there.
Four days.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
And.
Overnight sometimes.
To have a sixteen day grace period where, yes, you can just go get one, tell us when you got it there, you've got sixteen days. Actually, you have sixteen, you got twenty-four, it was actually probably about seventeen days. Uh, to, to get the job done, you don't need a permit, just tell us you got it there.
Yeah, I mean, administratively, you have sixteen.
A permit is good.
Yeah, I don't know if you wanna be bothered, bothered by me.
But, well, yeah, exactly.
And of course, most of these things are gonna be complaint driven if they're sitting out there. Someone says, hey, they've had a storage in and out here for a week already. Yes ma'am, we know, they told us, or yes sir, they told us a week ago, they'll have it gone in a week. Uh, or you may not know about them, that's your first notification. So.
In another community I work with, we were talking about this too, they made the comment that, you know, there's an incentive for the person to get it over there. They're trying to usually pay the company per day.
Yep.
Per week or whatever it is, so they don't wanna sit there.
Sometimes the rents aren't that cheap because they're actually trying to make money.
Yeah, or they have a penalty for every actually.
It's like when you rent a U-Haul truck, you're gonna use it and get it back because you're paying by the.
On the block?
It's on the block, yeah. I like that sixteen days.
I like the sixteen day thing and then especially if you hook it up with like perhaps the last three bullet items. Particularly the last item and then the third to last item. Uh, you know, that bonded contractors would have the ability to keep them on there as long as the construction's going on. And if there's special, temporary special permits, casualty damage. Uh, I'm sure they could probably even have broader language that, there might be something beyond casualty that might warrant temporary special permits. And we can, we can always handle it with that, I would think.
Would you want staff making that decision to go over it, met whatever criteria came up for casualty or would you want?
Oh, I, I don't think we'd wanna have, I'm just determining whether somebody's having, by the time we meet, the casualty's over, they probably got it cleaned up already.
I would say staff, just because of that.
Yeah, and anything we do would require counsel.
So you're talking two months.
That would, that would be.
I.
You guys are quick and fast, but you're not that, not that fast.
I don't like the part about allow everywhere.
No.
Starting, it, it has to put the same guidelines that.
But it's gotta have an active building permit. I don't know what they meant by that, what the language meant.
Yeah, active.
But whether it's a residence or an apartment or a commercial business or industrial permit.
Somebody's gonna look at that and put it right up on the park, border lines all the way around. We have a five foot setback or comply with the regulations that exist on the property already. That should be in there, allowed within the guidelines that are set, you know, for property.
Are you saying everywhere in terms of location on the lot or everywhere?
That's what I mean, it's too vague and somebody, you know how I was talking about building and killing to put a car in? Well, there are people that will do stuff like that. Not saying I was.
But see, I thought everywhere was as permitted by zoning. Maybe that's the language.
As.
Maybe, maybe that everywhere needs to be.
Permitted by zoning, yeah.
There is a difference between that point and one above it, a licensed and bonded, and then if you're building your own house, you're not licensed and bonded. You want it to apply to anybody who's building or just licensed and bonded.
The thing is, you could come in and pull a permit, put windows in your house if you have it there for two years, as long as they're doing construction. You put one window, you pull one door off, you got some activity going. You can drag that out for years with a building permit, as long as you have something, something where every once in a while, somebody wants storage in their yard. You drag it out for years, a licensed bonded contractor. How are you gonna license for laziness and, you know, non-consideration? I know what happens, but you're not gonna legislate. Well, that's why you just go, that's licensed and bonded contractors with a permit. But that would be something that just doesn't care. How are you gonna legislate caring?
Even think about that, uh, marble complex, that's over.
Yes.
That's been there for.
Oh.
Years, ten years?
Yeah.
Long time. Raccoons were living in and out.
I don't know if they're licensed or bonded or not, but it could still happen.
And it happened, it happened right across from court, I mean, uh, city hall here on the river.
Yeah.
When that went into a wall. So, yeah. Nothing on that one, just reword it, not everywhere and kinda show where they can put it. That's the only thing that needs to change there.
So, we skipped number, size and length.
So, just before we leave this section, so we're saying sixty day grace period, right? We're not requiring permits for these things.
No.
And the last three, everything else is.
Pretty much.
Yep.
Clarify in some of that language.
Clarify everywhere.
Maybe once we see the semifinal draft and tweak. Could you guys do something with a hun, have a maximum one hundred eighty days with approval on it additionally?
I was gonna look to see what the duration of the building permit, I thought it was six months, you can get a, a six month extension, uh, building permit. So you don't get the person, but you know that takes two years. But they have to get a extension on a building permit in order to keep it longer than six months.
Is there a way to flag the two together so that, uh, construction pods and building permits are discussed at the same time?
True, true. And I think that's where, must have an active building permit that possibly come into any play. But I'll look to verify that, the direction.
We wanna discuss maximum number, size and that, then move on or go up to the end and come back?
Let's go to the end and come back.
Then.
No.
Maximum height?
Ten feet.
Ten feet.
Ten feet. If you're allowed to build.
Cannot be, and don't stack.
Well, if you stack two ten footers, you're over the eighteen foot building regulation. That says can't stack them.
Well, really, you can't stack them, you can't haul them, so you can go thirteen feet.
Well.
So pods, you get it down the road, thirteen six is your max height, so.
That's not stacking, stacking to put two of them together.
I think stacked on the, I think it was a time of stacked on the property. Right, I mean, so you, really, do you have to have a ten foot height? They can't haul them over thirteen six down the road.
Yeah, but they couldn't put one down and then set another one atop of it.
Yeah, just a can stack, you know, why do you need ten feet that can't stack?
Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay, getting rid of the ten feet then, okay.
Just have a can stack.
Cannot be stacked, okay? Yeah, you're right, because they're only about ten feet, they can only be ten feet tall all over the road.
Right.
Keep it simple.
Yep.
Signage, only contact info for storage manufacturer, manufacturer. No advertising, maximum six square feet.
You'd probably wind up with some advertising on some of those moving pods or it's U-Haul or something. Uh, the owner, I think the owner's name, if that would be the agency renting it or selling it.
Yeah, a lot of them come in with a Russian or Chinese company on.
Matson?
Ying Ming.
Marks or.
Ying Ming or.
Yeah.
What's the other one now? What's my other journey? There's a couple of them.
I know, you see.
Ying Ming is one that.
You see them coming through. Especially going to the West Side once so many trains are coming through.
Somewhere on, somewhere on that pod should be a tag or label or sign of who owns it.
Yeah, that's right. I think the first one is a good one.
There's gotta be some sort of certification for these things. And if a building inspector is going to look at it, he's, he needs to talk to somebody about it.
Yeah, I think the first one.
Contact numbers.
Should be storage owner or manufacturer. The owner.
Owner. I think.
First, yeah, storage manufacturer slash owner.
Yeah.
And or.
Yes, I don't think if you call somebody who's a Russian, multi-billion dollar, per billion dollar firm, that takes a lot of them off, they're gonna care about storage. Gonna contact them anyway. Uh, maximum six square feet for that contact info. What's our signage in residential square foot?
Eight.
But if you get one of these things with a big Matson on the side, they're gonna have fifty square feet of quote unquote signage. That's gonna be, how are you gonna eliminate that?
Well, it kind of.
I think the contact info is what that's, that maximum square foot is should pertain to and maybe six square feet's enough, you know.
Six square feeting to cover the corner where they put the signage on. Yeah.
May I ask you another question?
I don't know why we bring this up.
Just a second.
Signage on areas, temporary units, no different than a semi or a school bus, it's something, you know, you park it on there, it's whatever's on it, it's on it, it's common for sixteen days. Give it on or just go and, you know, your, all your contractors have their names on the side of them, it's. Perhaps we should just have the contact information on there and really not address the rest of the language alongside.
You know, uh, I'm looking at the signage aspect, I'll get back to in a second. Maybe they should be required to paint up anything, because otherwise they could spray McDonald's on every one of them, say that's what was on it, you know. Beginning by, if they're required, it's almost like a billboard then, you know. Maybe they should be painted out. We don't require a color for anything, but these things should be cleaned up and.
Castles back to the graffiti thing too.
It's even like, I, I'm not sure about this, but if you buy a truck and you use it for your own personal business, you have to get rid of the signage that used to be on it for a different business. You know what I mean? I think it's a mind dot thing.
But I don't know if it's, if U-Haul or Ryder or Allied, Move-er, Vans, if, if they're in the pod business.
Yeah.
They're, they're gonna scream if you're gonna paint over their sign, that they just spent a lot of money to put on the side. That's why with, in that regard, and I'm not, I, I, I'm not talking about signs packed up onto these things. I don't know that, you know, that should be, I don't, I don't even know if we can get into addressing that, but the.
How about, maybe this is something you should talk to Tony about or lead on that, because it could, we could be dealing with signage matters again, you know. And we don't wanna mess around with that, so.
We'll talk to Tony.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, I was just gonna say, it's different than a, a vehicle with wheels. There, the state allows you to put whatever on your car, in your own yard, whatever, but these are not wheeled licensed vehicles. And if they have any kind of signage on them, they're an off-rim a sign.
That's, that's, I'm kinda thinking on that line.
Yeah, they would be. No, don't.
So, uh, that's something, we'll talk to Tony. And you know what, I haven't seen too many of them that have old signage on them. It's like people generally spray them off.
Although like, like you said, the companies are gonna have their logos on it.
They got their logos, they got their four numbers, they got all that, just put more than six square feet, three square feet.
The one I was, you know, you see Russian for is pods, it's called pods.
So you have.
It's pods and six four letters.
From that, because you're not letting them put them in your town because their corners on the side, it's like, discrimination, you're keeping them from doing business in town.
And I believe they could put a tarp or something over the car.
Well, that's way cuter and.
I know.
A guitar's flat on my head.
Or a fence around it. Anyway, check into that one.
We'll talk to Tony and see what.
No human occupancy, I'm all for that. Cannot be connected to power source, water or sewer, I'm kinda good with that one too.
Would, now, do they consider that toward an extension cord in there for light?
No.
Because some of them are lighted, you know, so.
Connected, yeah, yeah. Plugging it in an extension cord isn't considered connecting.
Connecting power.
I watched this.
I'm hoping you're running a, an extension cord is connecting with the power.
Survival show in California, they're taking a lot of these and filling them up with food and using them in case if they have to live in them. But that must be out in the rural area.
If you go on Pinterest, there's all kinds of places that are making houses out of these.
Yeah.
First time, first time about the nerds, yeah. Some of them are pretty, pretty nice looking when they get done, but yeah, let's not go into that little deal.
Oh, yes, but power source and everything, a lot of it's wired. Trouble light.
Right, because in contracting trailers, they all got, they got the lights going on the middle, they plug them in, so they've got lights and some of them got power in there, they got thread chains and all kinds of stuff in there, so.
Well, the sixteen days are less.
Yeah, that's true too, yeah.
Yeah. I like the third one, I think that's well written.
Yeah, the only thing I'd say about that is, you know, it really forced every person to.
Well, at least they know they should have it in there and if for some reason, they had to go in there and it's there in the sign up. Or if somebody complains and they see them putting in hazardous waste, at least you can go in there and check them out, you know.
So, just to be devil's advocate here, the contractor has one of these, they put them on. Have gallons, yeah, they just have this, put in their generator, unfortunately they have that. That hazardous material.
They can't have it in their garage.
Can, well, but an oxy fuel settling torch, it's hazardous, possible. And on your farmers, you even let them have a torch outfit in their trailer?
Yeah, but these aren't, these aren't their trailers, these are storage.
Pots, well, storage pots, same deal, you got all the contractors up there Burger King, the farmer's in there, he's got an oxy settling former torch in there, hazardous material.
They're probably in his, in his traveling truck though, or his traveling.
Probably not.
They have to be.
I delivered many of them, they store it in there, they throw ten, fifteen things in there when they're at the job site, that's how they stay until they're done.
They have to have them chained up.
They gotta unscared and stuff the walls out.
Still happens.
Still hazardous, they just start hazardous material.
Well.
Gas.
They're propane for your.
But if they're storing.
Propane for your.
If they're storing that much in a confined area, are there not other, uh, laws and rules that govern? How much can be stored in a confined area? I'll imagine fire codes or something must address total cubic feet of combustible gas or total number of gallons of liquid fuel that can be stored in an, in an enclosed area? There's gotta be something.
I would think fire code would cover that. Again, like Ben said, that's assuming we're able to access, find out.
Well, of course, yeah. They're not gonna know what's behind there unless it's reported or something.
Or the doors are open, yeah.
But you have fifty-five gallon drum oil.
Yeah.
For next to a company that I grow. And, and the thing is that. Now we're regulating what they can and can't put in, it's just. But they also know, most of those commercial operators know how much. But they also know, most of those commercial operators know how much they can store in an enclosed area.
Right.
And if they're storing more than what they're supposed to have in an enclosed area, they are trying to skirt the rules. You know, yes, they'll do it if they don't get caught, it's not illegal, right?
Yeah, we, we got here, we say no at all.
Well.
So they can't have.
They're already being, yeah, but they're already being told no at all with fire codes, not, not at all.
And they're making a choice on their own, do it if they get cited.
No waste, no business inventory, no commercial goods, no.
Maybe we need to say, or, or hazardous materials as defined by the state fire code or something.
Well, unless we just take the hazardous material portion out of it, 'cause if, if it's covering.
Fire code, then it's covered there anyway.
Covered there anyways.
Yeah, make it illegal material.
Illegal material.
And those would be covered by state statute, huh?
Yeah.
That's true. I, you know, it's part of me that, I think is what you're saying, Charlie, is maybe it's better to leave this alone, in the sense that we've got the sixteen day limit.
Right.
Although not for active construction projects. You know, if somebody's throwing their Burger King wrappers in there, they sit there for a few days, that's trash.
Right.
They have a trash can in there, you know, it's, they're fifty-five gallon drum, they're throwing garbage in. I mean, just a whole can of worms.
I know, but the, the, the purpose is.
Yeah, there you go.
There's a good purpose to what's trying to be said there, I don't know how it needs to be said.
I could work on something that.
Okay.
Try to come and strike the balance there, and see.
I just don't think we wanna get too indepth with what they can and can't put, put inside them.
Yeah.
They're willing to risk it on their property with it, it's no different than, we don't tell people what they can and can't put in their garage, or they can and can't put in their basement in their house, or.
Yeah.
I don't know why we're talking about what they can and can't put inside the container.
And if they are.
We could work on working that.
If it's covered by other rules and rights already, then why do we need another?
And you know, right here, business inventory, come on, if somebody's running a, a house business, they're gonna need something like this to move that stuff out, you know? So.
Put it like Walmart, if you're using it for storage, they redo their back room, they put their inventory in there to stay it out of the way so they can do a remodel. I think we just whack that over the plane and be done with it.
You wanna go there, Rob?
Yeah. Try to put something together, that's sensible.
We'll do it all later. You guys are nice.
So it's the most soil on the base.
Yeah.
So. So try and work something.
Can, can I work something out on that one? I like the next one.
Motorized vehicle?
No, 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 shops, studios, hobby rooms, I don't think you, these are not an occupancy thing.
Yeah, but if it gets sixteen days and building permits cover.
Yeah, then we need to do that.
We didn't get all for a shop, that's a lot of construction stuff.
Yeah.
Occupancy.
Way hoes.
Yeah, we've already addressed that.
Yeah, who's gonna lock that kid up in there?
So take the, because it's already taken care of by now.
Yeah.
Okay. What about the motorized passenger vehicles?
Second series four-wheeler or stuff like that.
I was thinking of that, uh, could be a motorcycle and something like that, you might wanna transport one of these. You know, if you wanna take the risk, four-wheelers, golf cart, you know, um.
I think I'd take that one out.
Yeah.
Me, I don't care what they have, I mean, if you wanna take the risk, it's legal to do.
Consider, a lot of them ship cars from overseas, I don't.
Nineteen sixty-seven quarter vet.
There you go. The next two, I don't think we wanna mess with, do we? I don't.
Yeah, we already finished that.
Yeah, we're already.
I've covered them, okay? And I think the last two would probably be good to leave in, then we get into that whole lot coverage thing, right? Drainage and runoff and all that. Okay?
So you wanted to count against the one?
No.
But you don't want to.
Kind of it's under construction, 'cause if they're building their, Max on their construction, it's their.
Yeah, that's true, but does that count? Or just leave it out?
And in a way that kind of addresses what Robin was saying, some people have small lots, and the only place they got to set it is maybe the only drainable portion of the lot.
Yeah.
But if it's a small temporary.
But if it's that small and it's that temporary, that's really not gonna act as drainage system, stormwater system that much.
Yeah.
Thing is, water runs out, it's unpermeable, so it's gonna go underneath, and it's not structured.
So it's not.
It's not one of the drainage underneath that you're on, that you're doing.
And tie-downs really aren't required, I mean, these things are heavy, what are they gonna do? Yeah. But when they had put them somewhere, they should be level, you don't want them slipping downhill and rolling on somebody.
Yeah, the, the.
Love ground.
One inch of square, maybe get ground, follow.
I know, but you know what I mean, it can't be a forty-five degree.
Right.
It's in the west side, though.
Must be low ground or stable or something.
Stable ground.
Uh, maximum number, uh.
Lot to lot?
No.
Maybe two per lot.
I would say two per lot.
Two per residential.
Yeah.
Two per lot residential.
Or.
Yeah, that or leave it open.
Or for construction and things like that, that's, or it says.
Leave it open for that.
Leave it open for that, yeah. You're not gonna put so many in there that they can't get to them. Maximum size, what are these? Uh, I think they're usually about seven and a half, eight feet wide.
About forty feet long.
They play.
I think they'd be nine feet on the outside.
Okay.
Are two inches max for road?
Well, keep it road max. They have to haul them down, if they're any bigger.
They're usually like twenty, thirty feet.
For any bigger, they have to get a special permit to take them down the road.
Are most of these things twenty feet?
We're climbing forty more.
Forty, there might be some fifty-threes now, too. The new, new semi, the newest, newer semi trailers are fifty-three foot, so I'm sure there's fifty-three foot containers out there.
I don't. Just ignore the.
Storage container, they're moving up and down the road with.
Pretty much takes care of itself, doesn't it?
Whatever it is, yeah.
I would say let's leave the sizes out, the lengths out.
Four hundred seventy-one square feet that way, so if you have a five hundred square foot, or less.
Oh.
Fifty times ten is five hundred, so two hundred five hundred square feet, you need a number in there.
We don't need it.
No, we take it all completely.
Like you say, about eight and a half, eight or hundred inches is the maximum.
Yeah, and the length is gonna be limited by.
Fifty-three is.
Same rules.
Where the highway.
You know.
Or else they'll have to get a special permit to move it here. If they have that special permit, I guess, they have to pay to pull it out of there, too. That's gonna be an added expense, so if they're not that big.
Sorry, I'm saying, sorry.
Just now, it's going to be a lot of residential.
So then, commercial, okay, well, now let's go back to residential, see if that was a departmental.
Oh, we'd have multiple lots, then, right?
Uh, just one apartment.
Oh.
Two per residential lot or occupant?
Living units?
Or, or per unit, they go.
Two per dwelling unit.
I don't think we're gonna have that many, we don't have a lot of people, well, it's.
And either the people live, uh, they rent out units, generally, them people don't have a whole lot of stuff right there. Yeah, it's not like they're gonna need one of these, they'd be better off with a eight-by-twelve trailer and cool trailer.
Or just leave it open, too, if they're gonna move in sixteen days, if.
Yeah, that's true.
They're coming with three, let them come in with three, I guess, if they're, if they're gonna get all their stuff here.
That's something they'd have to speak to the property owner, their landlord, they're not gonna want a lot of these sitting around, because then it's hard to rent.
I say we just leave, leave them all open. Whatever they're gonna fit on their lot, I guess, they can, be one of their lot stacks, five feet apart.
Well, we, we, you know, we put two per lot, so whatever the lot measurements are, they can have two per lot, you know? That's what we have earlier here, our maximum number.
So now, now is this limit, is that for construction, too, or is it just for moving?
No, construction is different, that's open.
For residential, too?
Yes. We can't limit, you know.
Let's start with this, and then we can start hammering away at that, on the next draft.
So, you, you want to put in a limit?
I don't prefer to see a limit, but that's.
I think two per lot, explaining, just when they're moving, and it's open for construction.
Okay, so the apartment situation, we're just, we're still saying two?
Two per lot.
Two per lot.
Yeah.
Well, it's one lot, the whole apartment place is one lot, so you have two there at times.
Was it a chance that everybody moved on at the same time?
Yeah, not.
And even to use them.
Right.
I've never seen anything like that at an apartment complex, unless if they're working on the place.
Then it's, then it's construction.
And if they wanna step these down in their own parking lot there, as long as they don't infringe on amount of parking spots they're required to have, it's all right, if they wanna damage their own stuff.
And then during construction, they don't have to rebuild those spots, it's gonna be living.
So let me throw a twist into it, over at, um, just off the front edge in there, where they're doing some construction work, where they entryway, arguably, they could have ten of them there, if they wanted to, um, given all those, only a little bit of construction going on.
Logistically, they couldn't get, they couldn't get them in there anyhow.
Yeah.
They couldn't get ten in over at East Bank, probably.
It says, uh, you have to be using the material for a construction, you can't just be storing construction materials for other sites on this site, you know? If somebody puts tin in there, I guarantee, we're probably gonna go and find out what's going on, you know? And then they better justify why they have tin.
What are you gonna do with them?
We have things in place for all of them.
So we're gonna find out, maybe move them off, or what are we gonna do with that?
Well, then they'll have to move them out, and we go through the whole process of giving them a written thing, tell them they're gonna be cited, and, uh, that's something we'll have to deal with once this all is put in place.
Yeah, we'll have to have the enforcement side of this, and right now, we don't have a permit required in here, so we'll have to look at what they're gonna be doing on enforcement.
That's something Tony and the league, and you guys are gonna have to deal with, that doesn't even pertain to us.
Well, it, it'll come through this ordinance, I mean, if we do report with this ordinance, it'll be included in that ordinance.
Okay.
Have to get it written on the.
Probably will, yes.
Okay.
Then the council has to look at it.
Right.
Okay.
That should be enough to keep you out of trouble right there.
That should be.
Thanks for the.
Baby steps, baby steps.
We eliminated about half of it.
There you go.
Yeah. So I'm back with a, a draft for you to review before we go public, Rick?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, we need to go one more time, just to make sure.
We'll get this ready for next year.
How many things do we have to really work on? Should we be like, uh, chipping away at every meeting a little bit, just maybe come up with a little plan, like a plan of attack where for the.
To-do list, yeah.
To-do list.
Yeah.
Uh, what's the name, we were just talking to.
Strategic planning.
Strategic.
There you go, yeah!
There you go. Maybe Ben, you could come up with a, not a real doubt one, but something that keeps us on track, you know, so we're not bouncing all over the place.
That's a good idea.
Then we could, then something to do, we can start whittling away at.
Yeah, strategic planning.
You like those words, don't you?
Wow, teach, teach them a big word, then we're good.
I'll be using it for the next two years, you know.
See, this money's worth a lot of it.
Okay, uh.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
I think we're done, aren't we?
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Keep the motion.
Yes, I made the motion and.
Next meeting is the fourteenth?
September fourteenth, two thousand fifteen, and right now, we have no clue what's gonna be on that agenda.
I might not be here, I think I'm gonna be on vacation now.
Just give a call.
Yep, I will do that, so that I know for sure.
Because if we have a public hearing and, uh, there isn't enough people, that happened to us once.
There you go.
That wasn't good.
No.
All right, thank you.
Good, now you're adjourned, I can ask a question without asking permission.
Yeah.
Are you, as, on that strategic planning, are you gonna think about, um, for the unbuildable lots, the small home? And not tiny homes, small homes, five hundred square feet?
That would be something on the list.
That'd be something we should put on there.
I, I think it should, I mean, now you guys are gonna be talking about those, uh, shovel-ready lots that are owned by the city, and, and why not consider moving some of the city lots that are not buildable?
And if I were you, because you brought it up, I wouldn't feel too good coming to meetings for the next two years and never hearing about it again, so it would be nice if it was on, you know what I mean?
Well, I, I think at some point, someone is probably gonna wanna do that at some point.